I gotta wait for Council Huddle to get back. Yeah? What birthday? Who's, who's, what are you guys talking about?
So how'd that go through, Daniel?
Not very good. We're waiting for Council Huddle. Lawyers are always late. They don't bill you being late, but they're always late.
His minute is up.
You still pay for that time, though?
I know, trust me. Council Huddle, we're ready. Good morning. 9:01 on, uh, April 9th, 2019, we're calling an emergency meeting. I'd like you to please join me, stand and pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, with us here, we have Ms. Schmelzer, Director of Operations, Council Huddle, JJ, and Commissioner Pash. On the phone, do we have Commissioner Boyce?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And Commissioner Gold.
I'm here.
Alright, we are calling this morning an emergency meeting. I'd like to get an appro, or any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none?
I have none.
May I get a motion, please?
I move that we accept the agenda as written.
May I get a second?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments? Roll, please.
Where's your Gold?
Yes?
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Alright, so our action items, we're going to request the Governor to declare a state of emergency. And Jeremy, I'd like you, if you wouldn't mind, step up to the mics and give us a, uh, a synopsis of what's occurred in the county in the last 96 hours and where the county currently is. Thank you.
Good morning. So for the record, Jeremy Dumeire, Curry County Emergency Manager. Uh, Roadmaster Rich Christian, I mentioned this before the meeting, is currently in with OEM and FEMA on the previous storm system from February 25th. Um, so he won't be in attendance at this morning. Uh, as far as a brief of what happened so far, we've gotten a, what they call a pineapple express weather event, where we received a-
Mr. Chair, if I may, forgive me, uh, Mr. Dumeire, are you talking direct into the microphone and maybe just a little slower, if you could?
My apologies. So-
Don't worry, thank you.
We, um... On the weekend, over the weekend, we received a substantial quantity of rain as a jet stream from Hawaii essentially came pointed right at us. Of impacted counties, we basically bore the brunt of this weather event. Uh, in a 24-hour period, over Sunday night into Monday, there were some weather stations that reported as much as 10 inches of rain in 24 hours. Um, the typical amounts were in the 6 to 7 inch range over 24 hours. This was after sustained heavy rains Friday night, Saturday night, that primed the system, if you will. Um, these rainfall events caused substantial damage within the county and also caused for a lot of work to be started. Um... We had, starting in the south, on the Windchuck, at about mile marker 5, a debris flow event that blocked the road. Road crews were able to open one lane. However, as soon as that lane was open, and traffic was able to start driving up the Windchuck, primarily, I'll talk about a school bus in this event. Uh, school bus went up the Windchuck to pick up kids. On the way back down, at mile marker four and a half approximately, another debris flow occurred, trapping the school bus behind it. And that debris flow, because of its, uh, consistency and because of its location, uh, became too unsafe for the road department to engage. Um, they are out today trying to engage that debris flow, but it did block the Windchuck, uh, at least for 24 hours at this point. Moving further north, on the Checkco, there were some landslides that did block the road towards Loeb. Uh, those were able to be handled by road crews. Uh, lots of high-water events, a lot of, uh, areas where debris came over the road and such. Um, on Gardner Ridge Road, this will be a very costly, uh, situation for us as towards Kate Road, near the Hazel Camp area, uh, we basically lost the road. The road dropped straight down the canyon on the, uh, eastbound lane of travel and undercut into the westbound lane of travel. Um, that road is, as I understand, not repairable in its current situation. You're not gonna be able to put any sort of fill underneath because it did drop straight. Um, they're gonna have to look at some major fix, reroute perhaps. Right now, they're going to try to shove that westbound lane as tight to the uphill bank as possible and at least give the residents that live past Hazel Camp the opportunity to still be able to travel. So that one would be quite expensive, uh, several hundred thousands of dollars, as I understand, from Roadmaster Christensen, uh, if not even higher. Uh, going further north, we have more landslides, debris flows, uh, road failures. Langlois Mountain's another one I'm aware of, where the road in two spots, five and a half and six mile, have dropped substantially, causing, uh, the need for substantial repairs. We did, because road crews were overtaxed, they were basically working 20 hours straight, as I understand, at one point. Um, we did have to utilize outside resources. Fortunately, we had the City of Gold Beach and IGA with them. They were able to work on Jerry's Flat, a slide at about mile marker 1, uh, and we do appreciate that help, of course. Uh, the cities in this storm did not have any substantial impacts. Um, they did have their storm crews out and such. The county in this situation bore the brunt of the storm. Uh, our road department was taxed beyond their capabilities. Um, and that's a part of the reason why we're asking for those declarations, is to get state help in having resources allocated for Curry County to help, uh, get past this event. Um, so that's the, the basic overview at this point.
Well, Mr. Dumeire, I appreciate the extensive report. Uh, from what I understand also, is Mr. Christensen's a couple people short on his staff right now as well, so...
Yeah, so we also had high water, of course, um, on the Hunter Creek system. That flooded over the road by the ODOT and Oregon State Patrol yards. Um, completely impassable at times, and some of the road department staff and a lot of county staff for that matter, live out in that general area, so they were not able to respond. Uh, so yes, he was even further shorthanded because of the event. Uh, and talking about the water flows, Hunter Creek flooded over the road on multiple occasions, uh, three that I can at least think of for sure. Uh, the Checkco River, this is a top 10 event for the Checkco, as it crested at approximately 22.18 feet. Uh, for context, in 2012, it crested at 22.9 and 22.08 feet, so very comparable to what happened in 2012. Uh, so, yes, we did have, uh, shorthanded crews because of the flooding issues.
Another question I have is, uh, hook, sag, and, uh-
So far, so good. Um... One of the things that we have to watch for here is, as the grounds desaturate, uh, I expect that they will destabilize. Uh, right now, this rain might act kind of like a glue, holding things together until it dries out, and then we'll see some more slides. We can certainly expect to see a lot more work in the near future because of this event.
Thank you. Commissioner Gold, do you have any questions for Mr. Dumeire?
Um, biggest thing I'm thinking is, thank goodness we have a little bit of, um, contingency fund in the road fund with this event.
Yes. Commissioner Boyce, do you have any questions for Mr. Dumeire?
No, just thank you, Mr. Chair. Salem here, the sun is out, it's gorgeous. I hope that, uh, that's the weather conditions in Curry County. I just comparing the work that, uh, uh, Mercy Management Coordinator Dumeire's doing, Roadmaster Christensen, and their, and their people, can't thank you enough. Uh, of course, Director Schmelzer and staff for putting this short, busy meeting together. It's gonna be too common for Curry County, but we're gonna move forward, progress, and, uh, certainly overcome. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all for now.
Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick?
Yes.
Um, this is a rather unusual event for us, especially for April. We're used to seeing high, uh, rain events in January, December and January. This rainfall event may actually prove to be a record setter for the month in Curry County.
Wow. Well, everything's possible in Curry County. Um... What I'd like to say is, I'm, um, I'd like to give a big shout out to everyone in this county for the work they're doing. You guys don't have to all do this, and that's what a lot of the people in this county need to realize, is the extent that our employees in this county go to at times to dot all the Ts, cross all, or dot all the Is and cross all the Ts, uh, make sure that the constituents of this county are safe, uh, the road crews to be out, and I saw videos yesterday, I went out on a, on a couple of, uh, these, uh, water washouts and the flooding, uh, on Hunter Creek, and to see the danger that some of these crews are under, to see these slides actually still coming at them as they're trying to move debris out of the way, um... It kind of really gives you reason for pause, to think about the situation that these men and women are willing to put themselves in for their jobs and to protect this county. So, a big shout out to everyone involved in the emergency services of this county. I would just like to say thank you for your service. So I would like to entertain a motion that we declare an emergency in the county um, for the damage that we have undergone due to this storm. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Have any further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce.
Well, two things quickly. Uh, your recognition of our employees is, uh, is a wonderful reminder, and, uh, uh, very well said. Um, and the Council of Ho, uh, you asked to have a storm in April. Uh, the last flood we had was in January 97. We had a flood in March, early, in 1983. So this flood, being in April, is probably the worst we've had since 97, which was the worst since 1964. So, the reason I bring this up now is that collecting the inventory of the damage that, uh, Mr. Dumeire, Mr. Christensen, and others, uh, are, are working on is gonna be very important, that we get those inventories and combine that with the, uh, the highway collapse of, uh, 2019, February, and, uh, that'll work to, uh, help us get the, the assistance that we need from here in San Antonio, particularly at the federal level. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, so I have a motion and a second. Call for the roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
I-
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
And with that, I would request that our Governor understand the situations that we have here in Curry County and in rural Oregon, and move swiftly to do everything that she and her office can do to make things much easier for us here. Council Huddle.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Council Huddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, we have a written document, um, and we have two commissioners absent. I'd like us to be able to send that with their signatures, just authorized over the phone, um, so that we can get that document and indicate approval by the absentee commissioners and get it to the Governor right away.
Alright, so I'd like to, Council Huddle's asked that we, you guys give a verbal authorization of their, of your signatures on this document to the Governor. I will sign it as chair with your verbal authorization. Commissioner Gold, do you approve?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyce, do you approve? Commissioner Boyce.
Mr. Chair, if we could, another, another option might be to send it to either Senator Hurd's office, or, uh, might be simpler to Senator Representative Brock Smith's office. I can sign it, submit to board approval. I would be honored to carry it to the Governor's office immediately and deliver it, and also, um, to OEM Director, uh, and anyone else at the board would, uh, request it. I submitted it too, thank you.
Mr. - go ahead, Jeremy.
So, once this declaration is signed, it will actually go to me, and I will forward that directly to FEMA. Uh, excuse me, not FEMA, OEM, so they'll have that.
So, what, what we're hearing here, Mr. Boyce, is once this is signed, it goes to Mr. Dumeire, and he forwards it immediately to OEM. It doesn't actually go to the Governor's office?
Yeah, well, I want to take a copy to Governor's office, there's no reason not to. And you have a reason to follow through with that.
So what I'd like to do, though, is just do a, do a letter, uh, that you wouldn't really necessarily have to sign, so it looks better, that we just, we're all in agreement that this is what we do, uh, and then send it to, if you need a copy of it, we can send a copy of that to you, but it wouldn't necessarily need your signature on it, it would, your name would be on the document, though.
I'll get that, Mr. Chair, but I want a copy to send to the Senator and the Representative groups.
Alright, so, uh, JJ? So once we get this done, we will send a copy of this to Senator Hurd's office and Representative Smith's office as well, as getting Mr. Dumeire a copy. Alright, so we have, uh, we have agreement on that, correct? Mr. -
Yeah, everybody.
Okay. So at this time, what we're going to do is we are going to enter into executive session. We're going to recess this sec, uh, this section of the emergency meeting right now and enter into executive session per 192660 to conduct deliberations with persons designated by government body to carry on labor negotiations. Thanks, Jeremy. Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Boyce, stand by, please.
Julie, can you sign that, Jeremy? Can we sign that, Jeremy, right now, so we can get on?
Sure. Thanks.
I only have a duplex copy, so let me get a single sided copy.
Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity's in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
Bioblitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big, obvious things, we know about. But a bioblitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles, or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So, if there's a beetle species out there that's very important, and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bioblitz. It's a way that citizens can come here, we have volunteers that are here, who are actually giving this information, they're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity's there, not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline, and that baseline data set is what we then can use, and not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the, the stakeholders in that bioblitz, can use those observations then, on into the future, to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bioblitzes, that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving, or, or maybe struggling, but, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks, and there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bioblitzes is the interaction with the public, and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here, working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a, it's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here, and, uh, and they're just acting like kids, out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my god, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now, we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now, we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langlois is less than 500 people, it's very small. So, we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really wanna make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I wanna do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now, people that wanna come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now, we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we wanna do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area's been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it, and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind. mind.